And I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. Please remain standing after that for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman at large, George Payne.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just want to thank you for your loving mercy that you give us each and every day, Lord. Lord, I pray that we would have hearts like yours, pure hearts, Lord Jesus, that want to do your goodwill in everything that we say and think and do. Lord, we pray that you would be with us tonight and bless our meeting. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda this evening is approval of minutes for the May 2nd, 2023 meeting. So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is bank plus amphitheater sponsorship agreements. Mr. Nick Manley, city attorney.
There's two agreements under this item tonight. The first agreement is with local IQ. They'll provide advertising in exchange for eight person box. So tonight that's being recommended for approval. The advertising will be in the USA Today Commercial Appeal and the other, I guess, sister publications of those entities, in the army of those publications. And then the other agreement is with the new Honda dealership, Blue Soft Automotive or SOBH Automotive. They'll pay thirty-six thousand a year in year one, thirty-eight thousand in year two, and forty thousand in year three for a twelve-seat box, two parking passes, five wall murals, along with three owned-site vehicles as the sponsor. So contract drafted for both. Tonight just need approval for the mayor to sign both of those agreements.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. I did have one question that I didn't get a chance to ask this morning at our department head meeting. When we say wall mural, we're not talking about, are we talking about paint on the, can we get some, do we know any specifications of that?
I don't. I can find that out and bring it back. But if it's anything permanent, it obviously has to be approved by the mayor and park director.
Right. The only thing I would want is if it is actual paint that's going on a public facility, there needs to be something in there that where they, if the advertising agreement ends, that they come back and repaint to cover that, something like that?
Correct. I'll make sure that we'll approve it subject to those requirements in the contract.
Y'all get what I'm saying? We all make that contingent upon them. Yeah, we don't want it to permanently mark our public facility.
I'm in my motion to conclude that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Oh, is that all on both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any other discussion about any of those sponsorship agreements? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda, our revisions to our employee handbook?
Yes, there's five revisions tonight for the employee policy handbook. You can do them all at one time. I'll just go through them real quick, each one real quick. The first one's promotion policy. It's gonna be, it's gonna refer to the city's career opportunities webpage. It says the bulletin board, system minor, I mean, a technical change. Next, the holiday policy. The statement policy is gonna explain how the holidays are granted via state code, state law. Next one is the work schedule policy. We're gonna add law enforcement text to the policy. I mean, add, we're gonna add fire and law enforcement text to the policy. The fourth one is the open door policy. Since we don't technically have a C O right now, it'll refer to the human resource director for the open door policy. And the last one is the reduction of force. It's just eliminating the policy as a city as an employer anyway pursuant to the Mississippi Code and Mississippi case law. So based on those recommendations, I mean, based on those suggestions and recommendations by Melanie and review the request tonight is approve all four, or all five changes with four being amendments and one being deletion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Kelly, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is an agreement with Comcast.
Last year, May of last year, the board approved a contract to upgrade the internet at the parks office. Infrastructure is now in place and the C A, the I T department's ready to activate the service. As part of the activation, the Comcast has said there's a better high-speed internet available and it's only five dollars more a month. I realize that's not much, but since it's a contract that needs to be signed by I T, you'd have approval by the board. So authorization from Michael Norris to sign this contract with Comcast for the service and the increase of five dollars a month for the high-speed internet.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for unmarked vehicles.
If these are vehicles that need to be put in our minutes as unmarked pursuant to Mississippi Code twenty-one, twenty-five, one forty-seven.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have a special event application.
This event, event, event benefits is requesting to host a mini golf competition at the city of South Haven Parks Department. And it's gonna benefit the Ark Northwest Mississippi. The fundraise will go to the Ark along with the small percentage coming to the city just for the maintenance of the event. So tonight I need authorization to approve this event as a special event along with the parks office and director taking the actions necessary for the event under our authority as our parks facility, or our facility maintenance, our facilities policy and twenty-one nineteen sixty-five Mississippi Code.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion of Alderman Jerome, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a sole source purchase.
This sole source purchase is an amount of twenty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-eight dollars from a company called Galaxy. They're the proprietary creator and owner of the property, of the fertilizer that's needed. So tonight is a special type fertilizer that has a slow release, that has a continuous nutritious application. They provide the sole source letter along with the proprietary information. So tonight authorization to approve this purchase order and resolution for the mayor to sign.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a rental variance for the Snowden House.
This is just a variance for an event, the Snowden House, on June twenty-fourth. Since there is gonna be alcohol under our facility use policy, has to have a board approval. So tonight I need authorization for the alcohol variance as presented.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it, motion carries. Next on the agenda is our Mississippi hometown retirement recertification.
This resolution is required to recertify us as a hometown retirement certification, or the city is a hometown retirement certification city. The requirement's been met and will be met as far as the percentage of budget that is spent for that purpose. So tonight it will go into effect January, it'll renew on January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So I just need authorization for the mayor to sign this resolution for the recertification of the hometown, I mean, the hometown retirement community.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for final tax exemption for Intuitive Surgical Incorporated.
The board previously approved a resolution for the tax exemption for Intuitive Surgical in the amount of three point, three million one hundred ninety-seven thousand one hundred forty-two dollars for a five-year exemption for personal property. Since that time, Mississippi Department of Revenue has also approved it. So tonight I need authorization for the final resolution for that exemption for Intuitive Surgical, Inc., as approved by the Mississippi Department of Revenue.
I'll make that motion.
Second. We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a budget amendment.
This budget amendment will adjust expenditures allocated in the prior years for Star Landing Water Tower and the extension of the service utilities. And it also will increase the funds for the vehicles for the police using the three seats for insurance proceeds on our wrecked vehicles. So we can use that for other police equipment along with using C's funds for other, for police equipment as well that were accumulated for prior years. And obviously the C's funds are only limited for police use. So tonight I need authorization for the budget amendment approval.
I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have a candidate for our State House of Representatives, District Seven, Ms. Kimberly Remack with us tonight. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me today. I'm Kimberly Remack. I live at fifty-two forty Wedgewood Drive. It is an honor to have a couple of minutes to speak before this board. I know many of you personally and appreciate your courage and foresight to do what needs to be done in South Haven and keep her thriving. It's certainly a thankless job most of the time, but keep pressing forward. It's working. I'm running to become the state representative in District Seven because I, I think we should expect and in fact deserve more from Jackson. Our county is the largest contributor to the state coffers and our sales and, with our sales and our other tax revenue. Yet we rarely receive a fair share of our consideration in the state budget. Having been involved in the political sphere for a good while, I understand remitting this begins with rebuilding relationships in Jackson. I will work with other electorate, elected officials and use the rapport that I've already built to ensure DeSoto County has the maximum state-level funding it needs. On the local level, you will always have my support for pennies for the parks and for the widening of I-55. I believe that these initiatives will help support and boost, booster our economy and increase tourism dollars and better high-paying jobs. I will also work to combat crime with sponsoring legislation ensuring strict penalties for offenders. I'm a warrior for our schools and teachers and that will never change. In conclusion, I will always stand against federal overreach and any encroachment on our constitutional rights. Thank you for your time and selfless service to our county and our city. And working together, we can make South Haven and DeSoto County a great place to live, raise a family, and retire. God bless each of you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now we're gonna go up.
Well, as a candidate, you've already addressed this board one hundred percent more than the previous person who held that office for the last eight years. So we appreciate that very much. Next on the agenda is a resolution to clean private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve, adopt a resolution agreeing authority to clean private property as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties that would like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our planning agenda. Ms. Whitney Cook, planning director.
So our first application is by Melva Christopher. This is a minor subdivision application. It includes two lots, one point eight two acres. It's going to be on Airways Boulevard, it's south of Bailey Road. Basically what you see there highlighted in red, there's an existing home on the south end. This is a mother and daughter request. She's wanting to further subdivide it to give the northern portion to her daughter. It is compliant with the requirements set forth in the ordinance for minor subdivision application and was voting unanimously in favor of by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number one on the planning agenda as presented.
Second. On item one, we have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Our second application is actually by DeSoto County. They are proposing a multipurpose agri center on their property, which is going to be on the north side of Star Landing Road, west of Highway fifty-one. Total site encompasses two point, two hundred and twenty-seven acres. It's an agriculturally zoned portion of the city. They have submitted a master plan to us that has everything from RV park location to the agri center itself, ball fields, walking trails. What you're looking at here in this application is the actual structures for the horses, the setup area in the arena where they plan to do rodeos and similar things that have to do with equestrian sports. What we've asked them to do is provide some information to us concerning the aesthetic look of the buildings. It is stone and metal, which definitely falls in line with the agri center and agricultural looks. There were no comments regarding that. We did have some adjustments to be made on the site in terms of their parking space dimensions, the number of, number of parking stalls and the accessibility, which they're making those changes for us. I know at this point in time, they're working with the fire marshal and our building official to do some core samples of the soils below, since it is that close to the old landfill area. We want to make sure that it's not encroaching on there so we don't get into a brownfield site situation. That will be submitted to us prior to any construction documents being released for them to start. But with those changes, the planning commission did vote unanimously in favor of the agri center site.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number two on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
On item two, we have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? I think this would be a nice addition for DeSoto County. It's in a great location for, you know, having, you know, lives, future livestock and sporting events like that. So I think it's, I think it's gonna be something that we have never had before that'd be really good. Kudos to the county. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Our next application is by South Haven Premier Lodging LLC. It is a design review application for a seven-story Embassy Suites Hotel located on Lot Two of now the DeSoto Convention Center's subdivision. You'll see highlighted up there in red where the actual site will be located. It's within the vicinity of the existing Landers Center. Again, it's seven stories, it's two hundred and forty rooms. It will also have an attached ten thousand square foot higher-end restaurant to be determined once construction is started. It also involves a lazy river and what he's considering a Vegas-style pool. You'll see right there the daytime view of it. I did have them produce a nighttime view because one of the things that is so cool about it is that whole roof line that you see above the Embassy Suites dark brown accent piece is internally lit. So from a very great distance, having that height on it, you're gonna see that illumination of that roof line and draw attention to that. We had some adjustments to be made in terms of where their delivery areas were gonna be. We had some adjustments made on landscaping. They did agree to all of it and made those changes quickly for us, changed out the materials. You know, what you see normally in this area are a lot of brick and EFS material, which is kind of a synthetic stucco. We asked them to remove that as one of the main pieces of material because that is not seen as what we would call upper end. They did. They went back to limestone. They went back to some metal facade and some Niche board, which is an expensive panel board. So they replaced all that and really made it look grand. So once they made those changes, it was voted unanimously in favor of as presented tonight.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item number three on the planning agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second of Alderman Wheeler. Is there any discussion?
Did you say the restaurant was attached or?
It will be attached. So the hotel itself is kind of L-shaped. And when you get to the backside of it, once the hotel ends, it actually connects with the portion that's gonna be the, maybe a steakhouse, I'm not real sure. It's been mentioned as a steakhouse, but that's where the connection to the, the actual restaurant will be.
And is it planned for this hotel to be somewhat attached to the convention?
Yeah.
It's gonna be attached via your parking, your walk paths, very interconnected, not building itself attached, but it, yes, it will have a lot of interconnectivity between the two.
Like easy access, I guess.
Very much so, yes.
Well, yeah, that's the whole, the whole purpose of this. Why, as y'all know, we've been working on this for so long is because it'll become the first convention center in the state of Mississippi with a hotel inside.
Right.
So it's gonna be huge for, you know, for a tourism draw here. So it'll all be connected. You know, the convention center expansion will be north of the existing Landers Center. And the hotel will be north of that at the area of Pepper Chase and Venture. So it'll be right there, but all covered. Also, you know, with the restaurant, it's also gonna have resort-style swimming pool with lazy river. This is gonna be something that's never been in DeSoto County before.
Is lazy river included in the enclosed pool area?
Yes, it will be around the backside of it. It'll have privacy from obviously the fifty-five and up area, but it will be encompassed in the whole pool area in the back.
Pretty nice.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So our final application is for a conditional use permit for a nail salon at five seven seven Goodman Road. This is gonna be on the east side of Elmore Road, on the south side of Goodman. As you well know, our ordinance states that you can have no more than two or in existence to qualify to open up another one. We've done the window survey. It does meet that criteria. We recommended approval. It was voted unanimously based on that ordinance requirement by the planning commission.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item number four on the planning agenda.
Second.
On item four, we have a motion of Alderman Jerome, a second of Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our mayor's report. I got several things I want to update the board and our city about. The first thing, recently we received a letter from the city of Memphis. There's evidently a, a new grant that is out for a climate action plan that's being administered by, by federal government with EPA. So Memphis has requested that we come together with them just to express our joint support for this initiative. Not asking for any money, just showing a regional initiative. I don't see any harm in doing that. They're not asking for any money, obviously. I would say that we share the common goal, you know, of protecting our environment. So at this point, just wanted to hear from the board before I sign a letter. Really would like to have your formal vote if you're in favor of us just sending that letter to them, you know, and joining them in that.
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Second. We got a motion of Alderman Payne, second of Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? And I'll update everyone, you know, if there's any other requests that certainly if it involve, obviously if it involves money on our end, that would be something that would come back before you. But, but hopefully this sounds like it's the reverse, you know, for a way for us to, you know, get federal money to the Memphis metro area, which could benefit, you know, all the cities. There's no other discussion, roll call vote please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next thing, y'all know the Getwell Road widening project is underway. When there's federal money involved in a project like that, the State Department of Transportation is the one that administers that. And so we go through M.D.O.S., things that we have, like this project has a fuel adjustment. So when they get those, that information from us, it has to be approved at the M.D.O.S. meetings. We've got a little, and I'm gonna let Dan, but basically the bottom line is that we have a difference in schedule. So like when we get the numbers together, waiting on board approval for our D. So like when we get the numbers together, waiting on board approval for our docket, then we miss an MDOT meeting, so it's delaying the project. So basically, we're just requesting an authority for Dan to be able to go ahead and pay those adjustments without waiting on our public docket. That way, we don't hold things up at the, at the MDOT meetings, but Dan can answer the questions about that.
Summarizes that pretty well. In order to get the pricing down, you know, we first did that project without a fuel adjustment because LPAs are not usually allowed a fuel adjustment in their projects. But pricing at that time, due to the fuel fluctuations were high. So we requested a fuel adjustment be added and they allowed it. We now realize why that's not typical for LPAs because their site manager pay estimate program that the state, that's how they do all their estimates. It cuts off on the 31st for fuel adjustments. Well, we can't cut off on the 31st and meet the schedule for the board meeting. And if we don't meet the board meeting, then we miss their second board meeting. And if you don't get approved in that month, they don't free you up the site manager program until they clear it, which means we would be the next month before it got cleared. So it would delay the contractor, all of us, in payments. So as the mayor indicated, what we're asking for is board approval for administrative approval to the city clerk's office for payment. And then while it gets in the process with MDOT, it'll be in the next agenda docket for board concurrence. So just, we'll always be one estimate kind of ahead in the approval process.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Gallagher. And does that make sense to everybody? Any other discussion?
Right.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing I want to update you about, y'all know that when ARPA money first came out a few years ago, there was a lot of discussion with the state of Mississippi on how they were going to use that money. You know, we didn't know if they were going to, you know, ask for, you know, projects from local governments and then just start, you know, somewhat earmarking and whatever. They decided not to do that. So they decided to, you know, take that money, the state's part, and pump that into agencies. Well, then, as they formalized all that, then they let the cities start submitting applications for that, for those, for those monies. So we have a list of things that, that we had submitted, a lot of those are utility projects that we had already, you know, kind of worked into our future budget from our utility fund to, you know, to fund those that way. But there was two that did not involve utilities, they were drainage projects. One of them is the Autumn Woods massive drainage project. The other is the Alderman Kelly, the Carriage Hills Estates. How long have we been talking about that? And so we submitted all these applications and all of them got approved. So what that amount, what that means is they give us 50% of the cost. So when we put our city ARPA plan together a few years ago, we had all voted on that and agreed that we would use our ARPA money for those two drainage projects. Well, now, since we got 50% of that funding, it's freed up some money for us. So what I would like to do is reallocate that money into our streets, in our street resurfacing. It's about $1.3 million. So what that will allow us to do is in the summer, rather than wait till the fall next budget year, we have, I don't have to keep preaching this, y'all know, but the winter weather was probably the worst, you know, the worst ever in my career in public service. And what that does is just, it totally changes your, your street situation. So we have a four-year plan now. We manage those, I look at it, engineering looks at it, we, you know, always welcome, you know, take your input and set the priorities that way. But, so we have a list of how they should be prioritized. But when you have a weather event like we had this past year, then it shakes it all up. Then you're like, wow, you know, that one has become worse than this. We've got to find some way to get this moved up to the top. So it's a pretty challenging thing to coordinate that. So what I'm asking is for the board to allow us to take that 1.3 million that we were expecting to have to pay with our ARPA money and use that for a midsummer street resurfacing project for 1.3 million.
I'll make that motion.
And two of the, like, as y'all know, as I've told you anytime, the list, if you have questions about that, you know, reach out to me. But specifically, just so you'll know, there's two big ones. Sweeney Road between, you know, we've done a lot of work on Sweeney. Sweeney takes a lot of north and south traffic now with all the, the growth, all the different things, people trying to avoid Goodman, Getwell. So Sweeney is, is really long, very expensive. A few years ago, we resurfaced the area south of Church Road to Star Landing. This area that has really become critical, well, and we also did north from State Line to Rasco, we did that a few years ago, too. So there's a section that we resurfaced probably in about 2015 from Rasco south to Worthington Estates subdivision, which is about halfway between Goodman and Church, is, has become horrific. It's terrible. The weather has just beaten it up. Alderman Jerome, is that in your ward?
No. But I drive it a lot.
Yeah.
So I know.
Is that five?
Well, one side is.
That's Raymond's.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's also, I think, where they had the accident, too.
Well, that's a little further south.
Isn't it?
Yeah. So this is, that was part of the extension project where the accident occurred.
Okay.
But this is just north of there, Worthington Estates, back to Rasco.
Okay.
But the road is in, it's, it's, it's in terrible condition, takes a lot of, a lot of traffic. I just don't want to wait. I'd rather go ahead and get on this one. The other thing, and I know Alderman Jerome has talked about this, South Crest Parkway by the hospital is one that's, it's every year, and I know people think, well, y'all don't look at, we look at every street, I promise you. I've been watching South Crest Parkway for seven years, and it's been in fair condition. I mean, it's not been great, but it's been fair. And the reason we've waited is because it's so expensive. It's a big wide road. When you go from the hospital south to where like Walmart and getting into the town center mall, it's, it's going to be a very expensive project. So that's why we haven't gotten to that yet. But the last winter was a game changer. It made it in terrible condition and it's such a high-profile area. Obviously, you've got the hospital there, you've got all the retail there, so that was one of the other biggest ones. Some of the others are ones that are smaller, but when I tell you, they're almost in a lost condition. When we say lost, we rate them based on either good, fair, critical, or lost. We have a few small roads. They're actually in Ward Four off Old Airways that were annexed a few years ago, and they're, they're like single roads. They're not even a two-lane road because it was built in the county before city street standards. And when I tell you, I mean, it's almost like you have to, almost have to go around it just to even navigate your way. And it just pains me to think, having to wait till next year to do those. So anyway, that's, that's what I'm requesting. If y'all will agree to that, that's what I want to do with the money. I think it'll make a big difference this summer if we can get those done. If there's no other discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Thank you. Pepper Chase Road Extension is near completion, not quite, but as y'all know, Pepper Chase, as it goes around the Lander Center, it's like a frontage road now that goes south, parallel to the interstate. Then it bends back westerly to Highway 51. That's going to be a big help for us in, you know, relieving traffic in the, for Lander Center events. We're trying to see if we can get a little bit of, it's not open yet, but it'd be nice with the graduations coming up if we can use that, so we're trying to get that done. We don't know for sure if we'll be able to do it. But anyway, the report tonight, which is a good one, is that Pepper Chase Road Extension, you know, we're within about three weeks of being done with that, so that's going to be awesome. Y'all probably have received calls. I know Alderman Wheeler and Alderman Flores have, Alderman Payne as well, but we've been working, I know a lot of times people, I get emails, you know, that, all kinds of messages that says, you know, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And I always kind of giggle because, you know, there's no way you can inform everybody, but we've been working on the, AT&T has a problem in the Snowden district, the cell service at Snowd Grove Park, not just a park, but businesses around there in the Snowden district. It's horrific service. And so we've been reaching out to them, and about a year ago, I asked Michael Norris, our IT director, to, to really step up the effort and make them realize that, hey, something's got to be done there. It's ridiculous. And so he's been doing that. We've gotten some good response. So the update for everybody is just to let you know, we recognize that it's a big-time problem there, and even though that's a private, you know, company that's funding that, it's critical to our park operations, it's critical to business in our city, so that's why we're trying to be a liaison for our citizens to reach out to them and press them to do something about that. We're hopeful that we'll see some results in that very soon. The last thing I want to talk to you about tonight is somewhat of a problem. Obviously, everyone knows our proximity to Memphis and the state line. So a lot of times when there's developments, especially industrial developments that are in Tennessee that are near the state line, you know, you're going to have truck, truck traffic issues. And so that's what makes us unique in most cities in Mississippi, is we have a major city that's, you know, within a stone's throw to us, and a lot of times, they don't communicate with us, you know? And, and I don't know if they have to, but we hope that sometimes there can be a, a common professional courtesy going on there. So we've got a problem that has developed in the area of Tulane Road and State Line Road, which is west. There's two massive industrial facilities that were built on the Tennessee side of State Line near Tulane. And when the buildings were done, there was no, no, no one reached out to planning department, to our fire marshal, anybody like that, as far as, you know, the escape routes and, you know, fire safety things. And so we realized that their intention was just to dump the trucks on State Line and run the trucks back to Interstate 55. And so I don't have to explain to y'all what, what an issue that is. Obviously, State Line is a truck route, but we have to be conscious of the damage it does to our roads and also, you know, in our original business district that we're trying so hard to revitalize between, on Main Street, between Highway 51 and Mill Branch. You know, if you start pouring an unlimited amount of trucks in that area, it also limits the business revitalization that can occur there. So a long way to tell you is, we felt like that we were left out of that discussion and we reached out to these businesses that are in Memphis. They don't seem to be very interested in talking to us, and so it's time that we get their attention. And so I'm just updating you on this, what we're, we've already got the truck route established, but what we can do, there's a piece of Tulane Road just north of State Line, we're going to make, we're going to put no truck signs there.
Bingo.
And we're going to prohibit those trucks, or else we're going to write $1,000 tickets to everyone that gets on State Line Road. And so maybe that will get their attention, maybe they'll want to talk. We're not against trying to find a solution, but they've got to talk to us, you know, and not just, you know, kind of, you know, you know, just kind of blow us off like that. So anyway, just wanted you to know, it's probably going to be a big deal, you're going to hear about it, but we are prepared to start writing tickets. So just wanted y'all to know that. Any discussion about that, by the way?
Sounds like a good solution.
Bingo.
When you started the conversation, I knew what it was going to be. That's great.
I love it.
Okay, that's all I have tonight. Is there anything specific that any of the board members that y'all have for me? Okay, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on. Next on our agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our city attorney's legal update, Mr. Nick Manley again.
Yeah, just one quick, one thing that doesn't require any action, but just put in the minutes. Previously, the board approved the, for those change orders that were under 1% for South Haven Fire Department number five to be approved by the architect with recommendation with our chiefs, our fire chiefs. So tonight, just need to enter in the change order number, the current change order with the, for the construction project, South Haven Fire Department, Fire Station number five, since it's less than 1%, it's been approved by the architect, by the contractor, and by our chief. So tonight, just entering that into the minutes, no action required. And then, I don't know if y'all are ready or not, but I got this today as far as setting the delegates for MML. If there's anybody who needs a delegate, an alternate delegate, anyone wants to volunteer for that?
I want to volunteer. I get just bombarded by people that ask me, so if I'm going to take the calls, I may as well be a voter, if y'all are okay with that.
That's fine.
Need an alternate? Make them, just want to need a motion for mayor.
I'll make that motion.
Alderman Kelly.
Second.
We have a motion, Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I just have it, motion carries.
I'll have it.